All right, call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. This is the August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting of the Edina School Board. The first action item is to approve the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting of July eighteenth, special meeting of July twenty-second, and the special meeting of August fourth, two thousand sixteen?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Rick, could you walk us through the agenda?
I certainly will. Again, the board just approved the minutes. We did have a work session on July twenty-second. That was to approve Valley View bids, and then a brief update on just some of the happenings in the school district. Then on August fourth, we did approve favorable bids for Concord and Countryside, and again received an update. As it relates to our meeting tonight, we do have opportunity for hearing from the audience. Then we'll move into the consent agenda item, personnel recommendations. It's a busy time of the year, so we have a lot of those. Expenditures payable, long-term facilities maintenance budget, we have a minor revision in that that we're asking the board to act on tonight. We have a leadership action plan for sixteen seventeen, and the tentative school board agendas that relate to those action items. Again, that's just the planned agenda. Board did review this in depth at the July meetings, so we moved into consent for the August meeting. Finally, we have some support service agreements, again, routine items, a field trip. And then we move into our reports and discussions. We'll have a leadership update. We'll learn some of the things happening in the district as we look to the future, especially in the area of some of our strategic initiatives. We have some policies to review. And finally, on the action side, we'll be approving an agreement, a two-year agreement with the Edina Administrative Council, and then some additional policies. And that would conclude the meeting for tonight.
Great, thank you very much. The first area is hearing from members, or the next is hearing from members of the audience. We do welcome audience input. There are a couple of rules. One, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If someone else has spoken on a topic, if you could try not to repeat what that person has said, we would appreciate it. If you have individual comments about members of the public, staff, we would ask that you refrain from mentioning names as you go through any presentation you make. Typically, there is no board discussion of issues that are presented. What we ask is, the board typically directs an administrator to contact the speaker and try to answer the questions, and we might have subsequent information at a later meeting. With that covered, the first person I'm going to ask is Ms. Karly Barlas. And when you come up, grab a mic and speak into the mic, please. Welcome.
This one?
I think I added an L to your name.
Yes, it's Carrie. K-A-R. That's right, I'm usually called Carl, so.
I apologize, I just looked down and noticed that.
That's okay. I am speaking tonight as a concerned mom. The most cursory review of the family satisfaction and staff climate survey results reveals alarming trends in significant key indicators. From a drastic decrease in staff and family confidence to the belief that our district is not headed in the right direction, we must honestly and openly assess the data. The downward trend is clear and it is alarming. I appeal to you, our school board, to delve deep into the survey results and begin the work of healing our district. I appeal to your sense of duty and responsibility to the families you serve. And most of all, I implore you to fix what is clearly broken. It will take all of us working together to truly exceed the expectations we all share of an Edina education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Bell. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're good. This is on, okay. We good? Can you hear me? Thank you. I come to you now as a proud Edina parent and a member of the Concord CPT community member. Thank you for the time. As community members of the Concord Elementary CPT Referendum Planning Committee, we wanted to express the following to the district school board, Concord community, and regarding the exterior changes at Concord Elementary. At no time were CPT members consulted on exterior spaces and drawings, and on eight twelve sixteen, exterior site plan was presented to the community. This exterior rendering is dated eight nine twenty sixteen Concord exterior spaces lot. The removal of outdoor learning spaces, rain gardens, play spaces, green space, and trees were never discussed nor reviewed by the CPT committee, nor was the increase in impervious space. There's been no discussion regarding the current place structure in place or future plans. As part of the CPT committee, we were fully prepared to work tirelessly and collaboratively with the district, Kraus, Anderson, and Wold on this initiative. However, it's with regret that we were not given the opportunity to do so. Exterior spaces are community spaces and should require the same due diligence as interior building spaces. It's our hope that this will be the new protocol moving forward, and as all of our schools will be undergoing exterior changes, transformations, and enhancements. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Winnie Martin, Kate Pacina, and myself, Chad Bell.
Thank you very much for the input. Next is Ms. Lauks. Welcome.
I'm an Edina resident with three children.
You have to pick, excuse me, microphone.
Like this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm an Edina resident with three children at Normandale Elementary School. I'm here today with several other concerned parents to ask the school board's help in stopping a planned change in the district's testing policy. As you may know, prior to last year, students in the district from third to ninth grade used to take the MAP test in the fall and the spring. In the middle of last year, the testing committee, a group composed of administrators, principals and teachers, decided that the MAP test should be given only once, in the winter only. We are concerned and think that this change severely undermines accountability and transparency for the following three reasons. One, it makes it more difficult to assess student growth over the school year and intervene in a timely manner. Two, it undermines the ability to assess the effectiveness of educational programs. Three, the change, its impact, and its rationale have not been adequately communicated to parents. We think that taking the MAP test at the beginning and end of the year provides crucial data in evaluating district programs. As the district embarks on changes in programs and curriculum, including piloting personalized learning, we must gather data at the beginning and end of the year to understand how changes in instruction impact student growth. Taking the test in the fall and spring also allows for important information gathering on student growth during the summer, when student experiences differ drastically. Please note that we became aware of this issue as part of our work as parent representatives on the data management group involved with the GT personalized learning study. However, we think this issue impacts all students. Changes in instruction, such as the implementation of a new reading program, are going to affect all students, and it is crucial that we measure the impact to the best of our ability. The data would also be very useful in analyzing what programs are helping struggling learners make the largest gains, which is key to closing the achievement gap. The MAP test is not perfect, and it should not be the only input evaluating an educational program. However, it is a national standardized test used by many districts and allows for easier comparison across schools than alternate methods. At this time, we do not have an alternative evaluation method to the MAP test that is standardized and objective. If one becomes available in the future and can comprehensively measure student growth over the educational year, then moving away from the fall-spring MAP test schedule would make sense. We are not coming here as advocates of subjecting students to testing without a purpose, but we are advocates for accountability and transparency. If you ask most parents if their child should take more tests at school without stating a purpose for the test, many parents would understandably say no. However, if you ask parents if they would like to have the district, if you would like to have the district programs, especially new programs and pilot classes, assessed in the most consistent and unbiased manner available to us, they will support the accountability that a fall and spring MAP test schedule provides. With regards to transparency, when we talk to fellow parents, they are completely unaware both that the testing policy has changed and its rationale. We think that implementing this change without the proper communication of parents will undermine parent confidence, just as the district is trying to implement changes in curriculum. To summarize, we are not arguing against a specific curriculum or the ability of the district to look at alternative teaching methods. We are, however, advocating for a fall and spring MAP test schedule in order to collect standardized and objectively measure, in order to collect standardized data and objectively measure student growth, and better evaluate the efficacy of different programs. If the district is committed to accountability and best practices, then thoughtfully gathering and analyzing aggregate data on programs is crucial. We have many lengthy, we have had many lengthy discussions with administration about this matter and have not made headway. We are coming to the school board because we are running out of time to decide on taking the fall MAP test. Once the window for taking the fall MAP test passes, the district will not be able to turn back time, and this data will be lost. I know that I have gone past my three minutes. I have handed out a table. I think you guys all probably have it, but I have copies of it here. It shows that when considering relevant criteria, having a MAP test in the fall and the spring is the best way to measure student growth during the school year. It has a lot of detail, which obviously we don't have time to go through. In order to be effective, the school board needs to be accountability-driven and to embrace and monitor data. This change will undermine your ability to monitor district programs and keep the administration accountable. Please do not let inertia stop you from fixing this serious mistake. There is still time to fix this, but by next month, this is, it will be too late.
All right. Thank you. No, I think that there will be some information in the report and discussion, and so if you could stay for that, which is the next item after the consent, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Teetz.
Hi, my name's Heather Teetz. I have a incoming sixth grader at Valley View and an incoming third grader at Normandale. And I'm here in support of the note just read by Maria, in terms of making sure we continue with the fall and spring MAP tests. I sent an email to the board on June tenth. Ms. Neville sent, Ms. Neville sent the email to Randy on June twelfth. I'd like to read it into the record here. Title is personalized learning, how do we measure success? Thank you to all the board members who attended the meeting on personalized learning yesterday afternoon. I know that all of you gave up hours of personal time to participate in these kinds of meetings, and it is appreciated. As someone with questions about what personalized learning really meant, I was heartened to come to understand that all the goals of personalized learning are things I can support one hundred percent. I think Dr. Rickenbaugh did an outstanding job explaining the foundation tenets, deeper understanding of each student's background, strength, weaknesses, goals, and allowing those to drive the learning and not just the teaching, and making sure the kids' needs drive the learning process rather than the logistical needs of the adults. What I didn't get out of last night's meeting, that I was hoping to, was better understanding of how we plan to set up any pilots and how we plan to evaluate the effectiveness of any of these program changes. Usually, you bring in a consultant because they have experience in making the change you are investigating. The value of the consultant usually brings to the table is a template slash structure of what the major decision points are, what the major risks are, and how they could be mitigated. Best practices around how the changes could be made, and some guidance on how to evaluate the changes you are making to see if they are right for your environment. When I asked the question last night, what have you learned about how to set up the pilots and how to evaluate their effectiveness, I really didn't get an answer. What I heard last night, and what the overriding communications have been around personalized learning from the administration, is a focus on quote-unquote engagement. I understand that student engagement is one factor that leads to better academic outcomes, but I don't believe it can, or should, be the primary driver for and/or evaluation metric of personalized learning. Kids can be engaged by games on the computer. They can be engaged by reading only books they want to read. They can be engaged by being allowed to work in groups with their friends, even if the material is not academically appropriate for them. None of that ensures or equates to them learning, and especially does not equate to them being challenged academically. Part of any planning, any big process changes, knowing how you will measure if the change is successful. We need to figure out how we will evaluate the effectiveness of any planned program changes. I would put forth that at least one criteria of success must be academic progress. In the past, we could have run a pilot for an academic year and used the fall and spring MAP scores to evaluate the growth of those in the pilot versus those not, or previous years. With the change to only winter MAP testing, we lose the snapshot of what happened in that academic year to do those kinds of evaluations. So we need to plan in the evaluation criteria and process when planning the pilots and changes. I would ask that you, as members of the board, be asking and providing input on how we will measure the effectiveness of personalized learning. I would ask that at least one criteria be academic progress measured by objective data. I would ask that we make sure that success criteria and measurements be explicitly set and monitored for all learners. The struggling learners, the high achieving, the historically underrepresented, the economically disadvantaged. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions or comments, my contact information is below. The point of reading that into the record is to say that if we're going to be doing these pilots, even the expert says you need to start small, you need to do pilots, you need to evaluate them and see what works and what doesn't. How are we going to evaluate those pilots? When you have spring and fall MAP tests, you have a nice way of saying, those in the pilot did this, those in the pilot didn't, or previous years did this. Without them, it's much more difficult to get objective academic progress measurement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other members who are speaking, so next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that people want to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next is reports and discussion. Rick, you up first?
I'm up first. I'm gonna just let, hold up here. We are entering our one hundred and fifty-eighth year as a school district, one hundred and fifty-eight years that we've been, I mean, community support education through funding. It's been a strong mission statement that is forty-seven powerful words. We've oftentimes coined it, and I don't want to lose those words, but it is all of us working for all learners. It's been part of our strategic plan. We've had three areas of focus, and we've talked about those at length throughout the district in various meetings and various settings around personalized learning, how we're continuing to evolve that, the need for this comprehensive program, birth through age eighty-five, and tonight we'll learn a little bit more about some of the programming that's occurring beyond the K-12 programs. And then finally, the partnership. The partnership not only with the home and the school, not only with the city and the school district, but partnerships beyond that with other agencies and organizations, post-secondary, any place that we can continue to grow this work as we look forward. So we've titled it Next Gen Edina Public Schools. As we look at what we'll be working through this year and what the board just approved in that action plan, some of the major strategic initiatives going forward will be at the middle school level, taking a look at the middle school programs, we move to a six-eight middle school in the fall of two thousand seventeen, taking a look at the elective courses as we plan, start planning for the fall of seventeen, continuing to advance our counseling and advising program. We've got some different projects going on there, but we'll want to, again, move that forward. Also, the district will be studying the daily schedule for this new middle school program, six through eight. Again, it will be a discussion that we'll have in the fall with a decision in either November or December. The high school level, we'll be getting ready, and we're already starting things. We actually had a group of students go out to a workshop to learn a bit more around the transition of our students and staff to the high school, how we can make that effective. We'll be doing some course development in ninth and tenth grade, the different course offerings as we move to a nine-twelve school, again, advancing the counseling and advising program, and thereto, we'll be looking at daily schedules for the fall of two thousand seventeen. Early ed, we've got a variety of initiatives moving forward with focus on kindergarten readiness and really tying the pre, early childhood programming, I should say, to the kindergarten experience. A variety of initiatives that were adopted by the board in June, we'll be continuing to move forward, taking a look at advancing parenting programs as well as expanding some of the services we provide to our earliest learners. The elementary level, we'll be sorting out how we'd be implementing the world language program at the elementary level, so that would begin in the fall of seventeen, and a phased-in process, and still learning a little bit more about what we want to do with that. Again, starting to explore the integrated curriculum, as well as looking at daily schedules for the fall of two thousand seventeen, but we're very excited to be implementing the new reading series. It'll be a phased process, again, where it's going in throughout the district, but it is a process that we'll continue to walk our way through. We're in the second year of our writing curriculum, and those are two major areas of improvement that we'll, again, be excited to be implementing and advancing as a school district. District-wide, we are implementing the new student and learning information system. We'll learn a little bit more about that in a minute. We're also exploring the school start and end times for the fall two thousand seventeen as we move to the ninth grade up to the high school and the six-eight middle school. It's a time that we have to step back and say, how are we going to transport this change to our schools? We've got a mental health and wellness initiative that we continue to roll into the schools to support our young people where we can, and which will actually be providing some in-house services, some counselors, at the, at the high school and middle school level. Continue to look at leadership models of how we continue to grow that. The equity work is a priority of our district, making sure that it is a successful learning environment for all our students, and so, again, we've made some advancements in how we can program better to serve all students. We've got some new communication tools we'll be looking at around the student, stakeholder engagement. So that gets to the earlier comments about the climate survey. We did just complete the community survey done by Morris Letterman, and we'll be learning more of that in September. But we're also looking at new tools that we can use to engage our community, both parents as well as our larger community, in a more constructive and more reinforcing way. And then finally, obviously, the construction is a major focus. We will begin construction at both Countryside and Concord, as well as advancing the work at the high school. And so we are making good progress at the west campus, especially in focus on the high school right now. The east campus with our turf fields are moving along, and we hope to have those completed within the next week or so, depending on the weather. Our two elementaries, as I mentioned, are Concord and Countryside. We're looking at additions there. We won't be doing work in the school, but we'll be doing work with additions. Middle school is doing their final design work. District office and this whole early childhood, our Edina Community Center is continuing to make advancement. And then we're also looking at the start of the building of the new transportation facility on the south side of the boundaries. We've got a lot of communication tools that we're, again, trying to keep community informed on just-in-time, as well as regular updates. We're also taking a look at temporary facility plans because we're in this transition, so we're looking for different types of space, both outdoor and indoor space, to make sure we have those needs met. This will be our theme for the school district this year will be around community, that one word, and it is true that we are really gonna have to pull hard in all areas to make sure that we're successful. And so we, when we do have a challenging time, how do we use the resources of our community to make sure that it is an all-for-all, and that we're really seeking success of all learners during this wonderful opportunity of strategic implementation? I'm gonna ask Jeff Jorgensen to come forward. Jeff's our director of support services, give us a brief update on some of the work happening in special education.
Thank you Superintendent Dressen, Board Chair Wallen Friedman, and esteemed board members. I am so happy to be here tonight to give you just an update on our strategic directions. I've been in the district now for just over two years. And prior to me coming in, there was a number of studies done, one of them being in the area of special education, and a number of directions were identified for me to work on over the next couple of years. And so this is just a, my effort tonight, to go over some of those strategic directions and tell you where we're at, and some of the methods we've been leveraging to get that done. So the special education department continues its efforts to improve programming and services for all students with exceptional needs, and the department is focused on four primary strategic directions identified in the special education program conducted in spring of two thousand and fourteen. Those four directions are listed on the board in front of you and really related to the redesign of the department's structure, roles, responsibilities, and relationships, redesign of relational approach for staff, students, and family. Number three, redesign of our space resources to support delivery model. And then fourth, partnering with families, community, and staff to reframe a more unified approach to service delivery. In the redesign of the department's structure, roles, and responsibilities, this was really a first step that we took on first year, and we took a strong look at our relational approach between special education, staff. Largely, the outcome measures that we were trying to get in touch with here were that our staff members felt largely isolated in the different sites that they were at in the buildings, i.e., one staff member in building A would not know the resources and staff members that were performing a very, a very similar task in another building. And so we made sure that we reestablished connections with our staff across the district, largely through the result, large, through the methods of using PLCs, learning communities, professional development, and disability-specific discussions. A lot of these individuals that we'd worked with didn't have a whole lot of time or availability, and so we started working within the school day and carving out time, but also working to establish some methods outside of the school day so that our professionals could meet with one another. We also encourage social gatherings and being able to come together in different staff development offerings. We also redefined a lot of our departmental processes and protocols. A new person in my seat has to come in, and people need to know me, and the best way to do that is develop some of those processes and procedures to make those procedural elements very clear so that staff get the things they need in a timely fashion and can get on to the work of serving students. We also wanted to work on a unified approach curriculum and specialized instruction. This is a tall order in special education because every student is unique, and just as much as we're talking about personalized learning, and such a tall mountain to climb there, in special education, we do that with each and every student that we work with already. And so we are well down the road of working towards a better outcomes in specialized instruction, and ongoing professional development is taking place there. Finally, overall satisfaction, our staff satisfaction with special education services is something we'll be measuring this year in the form of a survey that MBE sets out for us, and as part of our traditional review process that takes place once every three years. In our second measure, the redesign of the relational approach for staff, students, and family, we've really took, taken two primary measures. One is the individual student goals achievement through progress monitoring. We did a lot of work in our first two years of focusing in on good goal writing and also progress monitoring strategies to help visually represent a lot of what the students are actually doing in their progression along the learning continuum, and there's personal goals that have been identified. We had an initiative first year in and second year in, one student, one goal, which we tried to slowly edge this in with our, with our providers, to allow for them to refine their service and their writing, so that they could focus in on one or two things rather than trying to get every goal done for every student. We are now in that next stage where we are all students, all goals, and are looking forward to seeing those results come forward. Progress monitoring helps inform our instruction and will allow us to make better progress with students. And then the percent of initial students' evaluations qualifying for special education services. This was not a hard goal to reach. Our direction to reach is the vast majority of the students that we evaluate for special education services have already gone through good pre-referral activities, and so well over ninety percent of those individuals are qualified for special education services once recognized. Our third, our redesign of spaces, resources to support delivery model. This has been a fun practice over the course of this last year, to participate in so many core planning teams for special education, and we wanted to make sure that certain elements were included within that redesign. One is simply the access to rooms with technology, two, daily allotted time for process and paperwork, and three, prep time, individual, team, and collaboration prep time for instruction. We've devoted a lot of time and effort to this over the course of the past year, and really focused in on number two, there are the daily time allotted for paperwork, but also that collaboration time. We have worked on redesigning an instructional method that allows, a redesign of staff time during the course of the day that allows them to have additional time to do those indirect services, those communications with staff, representative in our three-in-one, four-in-one, and burst-of-service models. It's, we also, the board also, I also want to recognize that in recent teacher negotiations and in the rewriting of the contract, that additional due process time or paperwork time was given for special education staff, recognizing their need to meet all those federal and state guidelines that have been put forth. And then fourth, the primary measures associated with partnering with families, community, and staff to reframe that more unified approach to service delivery. What I'm gonna bring in for a moment here are a whole discussion on the mental health and wellness service continuum and everything that is going on in that effort. It's a service that has traditionally only been available to many of our special education students because we contracted for those services, but we're taking a look at saying, how can a service like that benefit all students? And so we are now moving forward in allowing mental health services to be available for larger population of students, and we're, our goal is to have that available to all. Percentage of parents providing signature the first time of the review of our current plans is at that ninety percent mark. It's ten percent we're still working on. Parent concerns and disagreements requiring administrative conciliation are well under our factor that we set is functioning very well, which is fewer than five administratively facilitated conciliations per month, and our overall parent satisfaction with special education will once again be measured this year as part of our compliance review from the state of Minnesota. So our staff, or, excuse me, our parents within the district will be surveyed in their overall satisfaction. Thank you very much.
Questions of Jeff?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm gonna defer Randy Smazlo. If you could comment just a little bit about our assessment program and just a few thoughts and ideas that you might have as we continue to move forward with our planning around this.
Sure. The, first of all, assessment has been a legislative issue in Minnesota with the legislation- The, first of all, assessment has been a legislative issue in Minnesota, with the legislature asking districts to prune back on standardized assessment, and even suggesting limits in terms of the number of hours students would be subjected to standardized testing. It was also a concern that was raised by our teachers through the negotiations process, asking the district to prune back standardized testing. That concern has been raised by our teachers, who feel that the results of standardized tests do not inform instruction, as do assessments like formative assessment, which is assessment that is ongoing, is rapid, is dynamic, and those are the kinds of assessments that the research would show really have power for changing instruction, and impacting what happens in terms of learning in the classroom. But through those two processes, or through those two, through the legislature and the concern raised by our, our teachers, we did put in place a process to discuss these concerns and create a more streamlined plan. We pulled together five administrators and five teachers as part of the process to review the concerns, and then create an alternative plan moving forward. We will take the letter that was presented this evening, the comments made by our speakers this evening, back to our district assessment committee. The district, the district assessment plan will be shared with the board in September as an informational item. So the question still remains, why winter to winter? Many of the reasons that the committee discussed included talking about the spring testing fatigue in our students. And when we sandwich map testing near MCA, the question has remained for quite some time on, how quality are those two assessment results to truly inform the, the learning that has occurred during the year? We know that we can use the data during the wintertime as a good indicator of MCA performance, as a good predictor of MCA performance, so it is a good opportunity to use it instructionally. The powerful tools around assessing learning include formative assessment. There's a great body of research around the power of formative assessment, and it's something our teachers have articulated with us, is that, that's an area that we need to really continue to grow as a district, and, and prune standardized assessment to a minimum. We know that we'll still be map testing in the fall for our third graders, as that's part of our identification process for GT. Any new students who come to us are automatically assessed to see where they're at, as we bring that data to our teachers. New norms for map testing does take into consideration seasonal biases, like things that occur over the summertime. And the committee believes that an annual growth measurement is a better metric than fall to spring, which has been referenced by many assessment experts as well. Donna, I don't know if you want to add?
So again, we do have an assessment report.
No, I would, I was just going to add that we, we do give the, so the, the map is a tool in our toolkit, and we are able to assess in the fall and spring if we need to. So it's available to us based on need. So for example, our AdSIS program has a need to assess, and they do assess fall and spring. They assess fall, winter, and spring. So we're looking very carefully at all of the assessments we give, the purpose, the use. So for program evaluation, if we have pilots going on, and we need to assess them, we'll figure out a plan to do that. It's not, yeah.
And, and we completely agree that the, the main function of the organization is to support high levels of learning for all of our students. We do look at MAP, we look at MCA, we look at ACT, we look at AP, we look at all of our standardized assessment data. But we are also developing our own internal common assessments, both summative and formative assessments, and that's part of our assessment process. We also do look at teacher feedback, and how teachers feel about how learning is happening in the classroom. And that is a subjective measurement, but it's also an important one, because it's gathering the feedback of our teachers. And we do look at student feedback as an important criteria for assessing what's happening holistically as well. Academic achievement is absolutely a critical metric for us, and so I just want to reiterate what Heather had shared, that, that is something that's very important moving forward. We'll maintain that.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy?
I guess I just have one. You mentioned taking into account student and teacher feedback. Is there a avenue for getting parent feedback on the same topic?
Sure. I think we do community surveys, and at different times, we solicit parent feedback as well. All of that is important into the matrix of, of trying to create a quality learning system.
So if a parent has a question about growth of their student over a grade period, with the way we're doing the testing winter to winter, how, how does a parent get an accurate picture of a student's growth during, say, fourth grade?
So the spring to spring for the MCAs is one growth metric that we can look at.
Okay.
I think there are, right now, we have multiple growth metrics that we're looking at in comparison to what we've had in the past. So we've had fall to spring. We have now six actual growth metrics that we can look at with the new norms from NWA, straddling multiple seasons. What they've done is they've actually designed their growth metrics around weeks of instruction. So it's literally, they're, they're moving more towards what the rest of the nation is looking at, which is flexible assessment, so that you can monitor growth as they go. So right now, we would have a spring-to-spring MCA growth metric that we could use.
And the, the assessments that you're talking about that are more dynamic and more current, do they relate to our, like, our current curriculum? Or is it some other?
So that's the MAP. The MAP is aligned to weeks of instruction.
I have a question about, I mean, at this, you mentioned AdSIS as being an example of one group of students who can be tested more often as needed. Are there some other examples of how it's determined that a student may need more testing, and how often we are able to use that?
So any new student who comes who may not have enough information, we, we do assess them for placement. I do know of times where, for example, at our high school, they've asked to use the instrument to do progress monitoring, to try to do some of that. So there's, there are cases where it's been requested for individual situations, and we've provided it.
So for programs like response to intervention, what types of data are used to assist students who need support? Because that's looking at students on quite a range, and I know that the data is an important part of how that program operates.
Yep. So we have a couple of progress monitoring tools that we're using right now. RTI, or I would say FAST is one of them. Another, another that we're using is called Skills Navigator, and that is also an NWA product. And those are a little more granular, in that they get at skills, and they're, they're more diagnostic, in the sense that they're really measuring discrete skills for progress monitoring.
Thank you.
So I guess my concern, which I've raised in the past, is really looking at construct validity. So how do we know that the internal measures that we're creating, subjective or whatever, formative, actually measure what we're thinking they measure? And what we have right now are standardized tests, which we, standardized tests aren't a bad word. They're just, they're, they're given so that, what's standard about it is how they're given. And so I, I just don't know how we're going to measure, how do we know what we're, what we're doing is actually measuring what we're hoping it measures? And, and how are we going to make sure that kids are making progress in a timely fashion? And so I hear the concerns of parents, because we are planning, we have a whole bunch of stuff that we want to make changes on. And in addition to that, now we're going to change how we assess it. So we're changing a lot of variables. So I see the, the desire to keep at least the assessment stable while we make all these other variable changes, so we have something common. Otherwise, you don't know what, how are you going to assess if it's, what's happening if you're changing the program and the assessment? That's my concern.
And I think that some of this is going to be discussed next month. Is that part of our plan? So maybe we'll dig a little deeper next month into this?
In a workshop?
I think at the, we have the assessment report next month. Did you have a question, David?
So is this something that's getting discussed in teaching and learning right now?
Randy, you could probably speak to the agenda coming up better than I can.
Yeah, this will be a conversation, teach and learn, David. And then it'll be on next month's board discussion. You'll do a presentation. Okay. Any other quick questions? All right. I think we're on to community ed services.
Welcome, Val Burke.
Good evening.
You're on.
I'm on. Okay, perfect. Members of the school board, Superintendent Dressen, colleagues and community members, it's my pleasure to update you tonight on the community education's program planning process. The community education program recommendations were developed in the spring of 2015, and shared and adopted to you, the school board, in August of last year. They included a three-year phased implementation plan for continued excellence and program excellence. The recommendations frame an early education through grade 12 and beyond lifelong learning plan that included four strategic strategies that provide structure and overall direction in moving us to our goal of unlocking time, talent, space, and, and, time, talent, space and time, pardon me. The four strategies identified are implement coherent and comprehensive educational programs, create and sustain effective and valued partnerships, develop and create intentionally-designed flexible space for all learners, and develop and implement clear and effective communications to promote CES programs, services, and partnerships. This year, along with teaching and staff and special services staff, we assessed and evaluated last summer's elementary and middle school targeted services programs. The targeted services programs complement current school programming to students in grades K through grade eight. Goals are to help students develop academically and socially. The process of assessment resulted in measurable outcomes this summer that included increasing the number of students who participated by increasing partnerships with special, special services and our school-aged childcare staff, offering transportation options for all that included transportation not only to their home, but back to their childcare sites, an outreach to elementary and middle school building principals to help coordinate better and more effective school year delivery processes in each building. In addition, in our early childhood program, Dr. Dressen alluded to, we're continuing to create a seamless zero-to-five early learning delivery system in partnership between early childhood special education and our Edina Family Center. This year, we completed the development of a comprehensive zero-to-five delivery system with a focus on parent education, kindergarten readiness skills, and multiple optional delivery options for all families and students. Under effective and valued partnership, we continue to work and process and increase options under our volunteer supports. This year, our measurables included increased number of volunteer speakers and panels to help support the May Term Year Two pilots. We met with, on a regular basis, the May Term supervisor to better clarify our roles for better registration processes, resulting in a cleaner process for families and students. And for all Edina Public School volunteers, our staff created a formal orientation process to help clarify expectations for both teaching staff and for our speakers to allow for a feedback and improvement loop. In our quest for flexible spaces for all learners, staff developed recommendations to you for facility use policy that's both simplified and updated the policy to allow for some flexibility and equity. We've completed the design process on an integrated early learning center, and we've led the process that created and implemented a temporary facilities plan for this past summer, resulting in a program for continued educational program options for students, for family, and community. And we'll begin the process for Temporary Facilities Plan 2.0 for summer 2017, beginning in October. Our communications goal for clear and effective communications is in process. We began the year by streamlining staff that aligns with district communications, and will help us more effectively promote both our programs in community education services, as well as facility options and opportunities for our community staff and learners through our facilities plan. We begin the year, we had a little mini retreat this afternoon with staff, excited to work on goals and processes for implementing Year Two of our phased-in process, and we look forward to continued feedback from both the community, from the school board, and our colleagues, to see how we can improve that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Val.
Any questions?
Just curious, Val, what have been some of the most exciting changes, or changes, I guess, that you're looking at as you work on the new plan? And then what have been some of your challenges?
I think anytime we're integrating more fully with different partners, both internally and externally, that's a process of constant updating. And I think that's a, that's a learning we've had this year, is that there can't be too much. So one of the exciting things that we're doing is really trying to align our staff to better, in a, in a K-5, in a 6-12 model, so they can really create those partnerships with the building principals primarily, as we integrate programming. Because as K-12 changes to 6-8 delivery, K-5 delivery, and 9-12, all of our programs with support and enhance that need to adapt as well, and they will do that successfully by communications. So excited about that. And the Early Learning Center is just a real opportunity for us to really, really create spaces for all learners, and create a model, I think, to integrate into our K-12 system. So we're excited about that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Val.
Next is SIS and LMS updates.
SIS?
Mr.?
It's like a student. It's a student. Management system.
Good evening, Dr. Dressen, Superintendent, and Board. Tonight, I'd like to give you a brief update of our conversion to Student Information System, or SIS, and our LMS, which stands for Learning Management System. With me, I thought I would bring just a portion of the team, and this has been a Herculean job, that are, are making this process go as smooth as possible. With any large implementation, there's always challenges, and I just want to give kudos to Megan and Mike before we get started, as well as the enrollment office, which consists of Peg Wicklin, Diane Morris, Jennifer Christ, Jane Wiegand, and Marilyn Cuppy out of our department. So I'm going to have Megan talk a little bit about campus, and we are live, and some of the benefits from that program.
Thanks, Steve Butner. So benefits of campus, it's been a great transition so far. We have already trained over 60% of our staff on campus through summer online offerings and face-to-face. And we've been using their training site as long with our live site, so it's been pretty exciting. Teachers are very anxious to get in with their rosters, and start playing with their grade books, and getting everything set up for the coming school year. Some benefits of campus is that it's actively being deployed. This is a company that is growing. It is a company that is housed in Minnesota, so it's a Minnesota-strong company. We have phone support. Previous to this system, a lot of the support ran through Micrae or our tech department, and now we have a whole system of support, a 1-800 number to call campus up and get some information that you might need. We have personalized learning plans for staff, so as staff are learning the new system, they are able to log in, and then with the training of Mike and I, and a lot of other people that are supporting us, they also can go into the system and get live training through the system. Our scheduling tools, I was in a meeting just the other day, and the, our admin and counselors were saying, yeah, like, this is going to work, this is going to be great. So they were excited about that as well. It's very easy to use. Our parents, we've been at open, or, excuse me, Get Connected Days at Valley View, and we're going to be at Get Connected Days at the high school, and Southview, and the open houses. So we're going to be showing parents, and everything that we've heard from parents is that it's very easy to use. We're working on getting the mobile app ready for parents as well. We have great messaging tools inside of it. A lot of our elementary staff are very excited that they don't have to worry about distribution lists for parents anymore, that they can just send an email straight through the system. So we're very excited about campus, and to get going with it this fall year.
So quickly, update on our implementation status. So, quickly update on our implementation status, and so we are live, and we've converted it. Just to give you an idea, we had over 3 million records, and so most school districts will bring over a year of data. We've brought over as much historical data as possible so that we still have it in one spot. We talked a little bit about the robust training program, and the fact is that we've had quite a few teachers use their personalized, personalizing their professional development on this tool. And we're on the onboard, we're onboarding parents, and so parents are getting access to the system. We sent over 5,000 letters to parents with their username and password. Phase Two, which we're entering right now, is with any system change, there's some features that we had in the previous system that aren't in the current system. So what are our workarounds, or what are we going to do working with the vendor to get those in place? We talked a little bit about test and assessment data. That's one area that we need to make sure that that's brought on board so our parents can access test and assessment information. And then we're very excited about next-generation learning and this idea of standards-based grading, and how do these modern tools help us with that work? And then finally, working with teaching and learning teachers and parents in the community to see if we can come up with some guidelines for grade reporting, frequency of reporting, and the tools we use so there's some consistency between all the schools of when and how and what information gets delivered. Go ahead, Sarah.
Can you just talk a little bit, for those of us who've been in the system a while and we're used to looking at our kids' map scores or MCA scores, and is all of that transferring over, all of their, so say I got a senior this year, will all of their records still be in there?
Yeah, that's a phase-two approach, and so that was outside the scope of going live. We weren't going to get it in. We have all that data, we've pulled it out of TIES, and now is the process, once we get underway and get the year off, is bringing that all in so that you can access that information from the TIES or the campus parent portal. So it will be in there, but it's not going to be in there at start of school year. And teachers to have it as well.
Thanks.
So our Schoology implementation, Schoology is replacing Moodle as a learning management system, and we've been doing training kind of in tandem with Infinite Campus, so we've had a three-hour Infinite Campus training for our staff, both online and face-to-face, and a four-hour Schoology training, online and face-to-face with our staff. And we had some great feedback today at the Edina Learning Institute, talking to staff about how they feel about the product. They really think that there are features that are going to really help engage their students as well as get some formative assessment data directly and quickly. And what's nice about that is this system, unlike Moodle, has parent portal access as well, and we'll be phasing that, turning that on in the next couple of weeks so that as students are taking assessments and things, the parents can kind of see that information as well, and some of our formative assessments will be loaded into that system. It also has a calendaring feature that will allow teachers to put events and assignments in their course, but it will also show up in a calendar that parents and students can access to be able to see that information. And as I said, the parent access piece, too, now not just the grades and attendance, but also some content that the students are working on so that they can help their child will be available as well.
So we are...
Is that the replacement for Moodle?
Yes.
So that, we're calling that a soft launch, and so we've worked on evaluating that process. We have transferred all the Moodle content into Schoology. We're actively training our teachers on how to use that tool. We're automatically provisioning, which means we're putting our users and courses into place, so it'll be easier for our teachers and students to access that. We've got a very strong training plan in place. We are going live with that at the beginning of the school year for our teachers, third through 12th grade, and our students, and then we will roll our parents in sometimes in late September. And so we want to get our teachers and students acclimated to that, and then our parents will get it. The nice thing about it is the parents will use their same username and password that they use right now for the portal. All of a sudden, they'll have an S show up instead of just the C for campus for Schoology, and they'll be able to click through that and be able to access that, so it's that single point of that. Phase Two will be integrating that gradebook from Schoology into campus, and so it's a one point of processing for our staff, and so they don't have to do double entry. Piloting a standards-based assessment, we're really excited about how do we move from a standards-based or mastery gradebook as well as a traditional gradebook using that tool. And then, again, this idea of how do we develop some standard practices of using these tools? So let's get to, now we have our foundational tools, and how do we come up with some standards, promote those standards with input from our teachers and our students and our community so that there's clear understanding of who, what, when, and how often. And that, again, I just want to thank the team for their incredible work. We're not done yet, and we have a lot, we have a lot of work to do and some late nights, but it's been an incredible team effort for it, and I couldn't be prouder for what they've done.
So how did Get Connected Day go last week for Valley View in terms of all the kids wanting to get at their schedules?
It went very smooth. We actually had people coming in, families coming in and saying, oh, we got this already. Like, they didn't even want to talk to us. They were set, they were ready, and we helped people who wanted to log in and find out more about the system from us. There were a few updates that we asked them to do within their parent portal. We've sent that out with videos and communications, so, I mean, we're being as transparent as possible, and if people have questions, we're always here to help.
So Sarah, I was at Get Connected Day, and Mike did help me log in, and so I'm starting on the path.
I got my letter and I logged in, so tonight is, I guess sometime tomorrow morning is when the schedules will be out.
If you need some help, we're here.
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we will turn the schedules on for Southview, and then after Get Connected Day at the high school, and then as the elementary opening, open houses go, we'll turn on the schedules for parents that way.
I have a couple of just comments. First, thank you, tremendous thanks. You've done a great job of keeping the board informed through the exploration process of recognizing that we needed another platform for managing information. Sounds like the choices that have been made have really hit all of the, every single key goal that we had in moving forward, so thank you so much for that. Two smaller questions. One, is there anything in terms of work, this looks like it will be much simpler, and there are things we can stop doing, so I'm just curious if that's your experience that, you know, for the gradebook process for educators, for extra steps parents needed to take? This looks simpler, wanted your perspective on that. And two, does this connect with Naviance in the high school system?
So I'm going to let these folks talk about the first one, and I can talk about the second.
I love talking about the first one. So yes, things have gone a lot smoother, a lot easier. One of the biggest things for our elementary staff is that they won't have to create that distribution list to send out messages again. Like, that's, that has saved them so much time already, like, a teacher hugged me at the end of the presentation today. Thank you! And then the other piece for our secondary staff, I think the big part of time-saving is going to be when campus will integrate with Schoology completely, and we'll have that grade pass back. When we get that, part of that, part of this plan in place with both companies, working in a smooth transition, that's going to be a huge bonus for our secondary staff who are living in that online gradebook, who are constantly updating both their course content and their gradebook, but this will serve as one point for them to go into versus having two places for them to manage that. So we're in the midst of that change for that.
In that timeframe approximately within this school year or Fall '17?
It's within the school year. So we don't think it will be ready for first semester, but we're shooting to have it piloted first semester, most likely, and then, again, piloted in second semester, so it'll be online next year.
I was just going to reiterate what Megan said about the, you know, once that integration is in place, but also I think there's still tools out there that staff are used to using and kind of using this year to kind of figure out within all the different systems which is going to make the most sense and which, and getting feedback from parents on where it makes sense for them to get their information best, too, because both systems, for example, have messaging capabilities. And so figuring out which one is going to be the go-to one is something that we're going to have to work through a little bit in the process.
And then finally, the Naviance, here's what I will say, is that we are starting to see some movement on Naviance and being able to collaborate with other vendors. They've been traditionally kind of a siloed organization. Here's what I do know, is the data integration is much stronger with campus to Naviance, and I heard this fall that they're going to start single sign-on, which means that in the near future, we might see another icon on the portal for parents that's Naviance. So it might not be fully integrated, but at least that button will be on the parent portal as well as the student portal, so one less click, one less place to have to remember a username and password.
Thank you.
The grading system, for parents who are used to, particularly once they're in middle school and high school, watching the grades, you know, there's quizzes or tests or whatever, and so we can kind of track our students' progress, that hasn't been accessible in the elementary school for, say, monthly math test or weekly spelling-type tests, things like that. Is that something that that K-5 would have more access to or would find easier with this system?
Yes, and this is our vision, and so we think that the foundation's being laid in two critical areas. One is in this, in, we are really working hard to define standards and have the system be able to leverage the tool to be able to record and document standards. And so we're pretty excited about this year, looking at these two systems and identifying how not only our secondary schools can use it, but our elementary teachers can use the gradebook features within our tools so that it will document competency grading, and then that information will roll up into the gradebook and the report card. So it'll make our teachers' life easier, and it will allow for more frequent information for our parents of where they are and tracking them. And then the other thing that we think is going to be the innovative piece is this idea of learner plans, and so we feel that these tools are going to be tools that are going to allow us to capture the information and use that information in a learner plan that we'll be creating, that we'll be able to put on our dashboard so that we'll be, that information will be feeding it, as well as other tools, will be feeding a learner plan that'll be student-centric, and so parents will be able to access it, and students will be able to access it, but it will roll up to teacher, to school, and to hopefully to the board so that you'll be able to see this information in our learner competencies and our standards, and so that we feel that these are foundational pieces. We don't know how that looks right now. This is our year of actually kicking the tires on these two tools and making decisions for what it's going to look like in future years.
Well, thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Megan. Next item is Policy Review 400 Series. Regina, do you have that?
I do. So we are reviewing for discussion this evening several policies, 421, 23, 24, 31, 34, 35, 37. These are all within the employee section of our policy guidebook. We did look at all of these at our last policy committee meeting. Most of them don't have any suggested revisions at this time, and they are just minor revisions for clarity on substitute teachers, compensatory practices, employee evaluation and improvement, and resignation, termination, or non-renewal of activity positions. So if anyone has any questions or notes that we should take back to our next meeting, I'd be happy to write them down.
I had to email Regina because I thought maybe we loaded the wrong ones, because I think there's no blue, there's no red.
Very little. But we will be happy to take a look at anything further as needed.
All right, thank you. Next, we turn to our action items. The first is the master agreement with the Edina Administrative Council. Can I get a motion to adopt the master agreement with the Edina Administrative Council for the years 2016, '17, and 2017, '18?
So moved.
Is this Gwen? Can you give us a little overview here?
Surely. We met with the Edina Administrative Council, which is primarily our principals group and a couple of directors, and there were a couple of changes, major changes for this particular contract. One is the fact that as we, upon reviewing some of the salary data and comparisons, we met with the Board HR Committee, and some adjustments were made to the guidelines that had been presented, so that included some salary modifications that were made. And in addition to that, we have a 2% increase for Year One and a 2% year increase for Year Two, and the other only change is that the health insurance will increase by contribution by the district will increase 3% starting January 1 of 2017, and then there will be a zero increase the following year. So the total package is 7.5% or $258,836 over the two years for this contract. I would welcome any questions.
No questions. So there, this includes the 2% plus a catch-up in a couple areas, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is policy, we broke these into series, so can I get a motion to approve the 607, 633, and 636 policies?
So moved. Second.
Regina, have there been any changes to these since we went through these last month?
Just one note on 607, special accommodations and services for students with special needs. There's a reference added in Section 4 about the 504 handbook. Other than that, there are no changes.
That was something we had caught at the last meeting, right?
That had been a request at the last meeting, right.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the 700 Series. This is Policy 719. Can I get a motion to approve the seven, Policy 719? This is a new policy.
So moved.
Regina?
No changes since the last meeting.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is Policy 813, also a new one. This is Aquatics, can I get a motion to approve the new Policy 813?
So moved. Second. And we do have a couple of notes on this one. I do want to thank Stacy Guyer and Sarah Shandell. As with all policies, their editing and organizational support is key. This policy, we had a great team effort in developing it and some really helpful feedback after our discussion at the last meeting. Melanie Pousatieri and other coaches within our district were able to help guide the final draft of this policy. So there are three primary notes since we last saw this. One, a minimum of two coaches are required to be present during swim and diving practices. Also, a lifeguard is required during swim competitions or meets, and the third difference is that the school district will provide a lifeguard at a renter's expense when the facility is being rented out. So if no lifeguard can be identified for a particular rental event, it won't be possible to rent the swimming facility.
Regina, does that go for all activities in the pool? Say, like a school party, would we have a lifeguard on duty?
Yeah, if there's a school, if it's a school event, it's required for anything, yeah, whether, if it depends on who pays for it in terms of what it is. So if it's a rental, then it would be the renter who pays for it. If it's a district activity, it would follow the guidelines for that activity.
And is that part of any process that goes through the building, so who's ever renting it, it's part of that process?
Correct.
That they're informed of this?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
And we had received a couple emails, I think, on this policy. The email issues were considered?
This is part, part of these, this particular language is in response to those emails.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next action item is Policies 901 and 912. 901 is Community Education Services, 912 is Partnerships, that's a new one. Can I get a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
And Regina, you're up again.
Yeah, so I'm going to actually just skip ahead. 912, we have no changes on the partnership policy. On 901, we did have a point of clarification, and Lisa, if you could speak to that?
Yes, so it's actually in the guideline, in the appendix, that we, the policy was amended to represent how the Community Education Services Board slash Advisory Committee or Council now actually functions, and so the voting discussions were taken out of the policy, but they still remain in the bylaws, and so we'll probably have to go back and maybe review the bylaws to make sure that they comport.
Which that can be handled by Community Education Services Advisory Board. Our approval this evening does not impact the ability for them to do so.
It's in the appendix.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're on to information. I have a big regret, Raleigh ringed.
Raleigh Ring died. Raleigh Ring was a longtime administrator of the school district. He was a teacher, a dean, a principal from 1950 to 1984, but he was a lifelong educator. He wrote the book, The History of Edina High School, that was published in 2006. He was constantly around. When his health was available, he was in teaching us the traditions and the power of education in Edina. He was a football player for Bernie Beerman back in 1940, '41, part of the national champions. He was quite a young man at that time, and he was an amazing man right to his final days, so we are honored to say Raleigh Ring had a huge influence on Edina Public Schools. He indeed was one of the key players that brought advanced placement testing, or advanced placement classes into our school district back in 1955. So we send our sympathy to Raleigh's children and grandchildren. Amazing man.
Just note to, thanks on behalf of the board for all of his service and our sympathy to his family.
Indeed.
Yeah, to Raleigh Ring.
Raleigh Ring. We do have a, offering a movie tomorrow, Most Likely to Succeed, at 7 o'clock at Southview Auditorium. We've got a pretty good crowd already planning to attend. Those that can make would be great, but it is a movie that really talks to this whole thought of where education needs to evolve, given how the world continues to evolve, and it's received very high reviews nationally. It's been shown throughout school districts throughout the United States, and we've had the opportunity to bring it to Edina. So we look forward to having that and follow up with a discussion after that. August 22 starts our official back-to-school for staff. What I would say is Randy and Steve talked a little bit earlier tonight, it's been one constant back-to-school. We've had a very active summer for our teaching staff, our administrators, community education with our students, programming. I mean, we had over 5,000 students involved in programming through the summer months, but it's official on the 22nd that we welcome back our staff, and then on the 29th, we welcome back our students officially for, as I said, Year 158. And with that, that concludes the information items.
Anybody else have anything to add? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.